Tamara?
Yes.
Okay. Roll. Very good. Please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Could I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Semenaro?
Here.
Ms. Hamel, here. Mr. Kurt?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin? Mr. Potts?
Here.
Mr. Shaheen?
Here.
Ms. Tordowski?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
And Mr. Basil?
Here.
Okay. Any edits to the agenda by board members? Okay? Any edits?
None.
From your perspective, okay? Under announcements, we will be having an executive session after this meeting to discuss personnel. Procedures for public participation are the inside blue jacket cover of the agenda. Having said that, are there any public comments on agenda items? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on.
Okay. Our recognitions for this month. We had our AEC painting volunteers. Ifjendemile and Michelle Miller would come forward. Just want to let the board and the public know that they headed an effort to repaint all of the halls in one week in June this summer over at AEC, and we'd like to thank them for that effort. So ladies, thank you very much. We have our certificates for you, and while we're bringing them down, if you have any stories you want to share?
We just got, we didn't have to do it by ourselves. So that's the start. I was the one that felt that it needed to be done and continued to be done. There's more halls than there's buildings that we can take care of in a week. And we did not do a wiretap. We had plenty of volunteers, both students and teachers and fathers and mothers. So we're just representing one great volunteer from this school this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Got you.
Once again, thank you. That's, again, our PTC does a lot for us here, and that's just another example of how they help us out. So thank you again. And that's it?
Okay. Under routine approvals, do I have a motion approved?
Motion for A through C.
A through C. We have a second by Mr. Semenaro. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
A motion for 8A through C. First by, a motion by Mr. Shaheen, second by Mr. Semenaro, Ms. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurt?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yeah.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Tordowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Moving on to presentations by board members. Do we have any correspondence?
No.
No? Okay. Berks County intermediate.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Basil. The first committee board directors met on September 19th. It was a very busy meeting. We approved a separating of three different policies on our way to the IUD. We approved ratified three-year agreement between the CIU and EdUnity, which is an online learning software provided of notes for this work. We authorized agreement with Branch One in this area, Daniel Moon area, Uplandwood area, the government wing, and only valley for the CIU to provide Title I services. And then we also approved a file of governing the Berks County heads of policy council and IUD itself for this segment of four legitimate things. Any other questions? Any greats? Okay.
Any questions for Mr. Kurtz? All right. Berks career in technology.
Yes. Last meeting was held Wednesday, August 28th, at the East Campus. So the highlights of that meeting were the NACD testing results from last year were released. The CTC students scored 93.4 percentage on their individual exams compared to state average of 88 percent. This was an improvement of half a percent over the previous year's results. Also, the conflict day attendance, this is either when BCTC is open or on days Daniel Moon is closed. Daniel Moon was over 72 percent, highest of all 16 participating districts. So congratulations to our students who make sure they get here in order to get the bus on around to.
It's good news.
Over at BCTC. Student awards from the FCCA LA Nationals at Nashville. We had several students participate. One former Daniel Moon senior Chelsea sailor won a silver medal in early childhood category, early childhood development category within the Occupational Child Development Program. And of the 11 students that qualified for HOSA Skills USA and FCC LA, BCTC won one gold, seven silver, and one bronze. So very good showing for the Career Technology Center. An update on the progress of the CDL training site. Two part-time instructors were hired. They have received their examiner certificate for the DOT so they can actually test students as they complete their six-week course. Construction of the training site was completed the first week of September, and I actually did attend the ribbon cutting ceremony on the 16th on the site to officially open it. We do have a maximum number of students in our program currently, and the note profits from the existing adult education program are used to establish the program. No bonds or school district money is used in any way.
That's great news.
The programs advertising effort is underway over the summer. As you, if you drive around the district, I mean, around the county, you'll probably see billboards advertising CDL program. They did also do a post-it note on the Reading Eagle to do the same thing. As I said, the day, they have day, evening, and limited weekend classes. And as of, like I said, as of the meeting, they had 13 students enrolled at cost of $5,000 each. They need 150 during the year to stay on their business plan, so they're well on their way to do that. The last thing is, the next meeting will be this Wednesday, September 25th, on the West Campus. The meeting starts at 7:30 and is open mid-morrow. Concluding my report.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wolf? All good news, I think. Okay. Mr. Shaheen? Any legislative?
Actually, nothing. I have legislation, just coming back. Looks like they're working on transportation first as of this evening on the news, and hopefully they'll start looking at the property tax issue.
Okay. And I think there's a filibuster going out tomorrow, right? Out of Birdsboro? Maybe Mr. Martino will comment on that at the end of the meeting to talk about HP76. Okay. Any other reports?
Just the curriculum instruction committee meeting will be on the second. We're probably going to look again real briefly about block scheduling and bring some type of recommendation back and forth, but I think we're hearing from the committee meeting and what's being done, and it looks like block scheduling will be beneficial to us from an educational standpoint. We just need to get it done or make a decision quick enough so that in the in-service process within their teaching staff, that they'll be able to properly be trained in for that one day per cycle that the core courses have a longer period.
Right.
Talk about that more in the committee.
For the sake of the public, it's not a full block, it's a modified.
It's a modified block schedule. Correct. And we'll get more details when we discuss it in the committee.
Okay. Great. Finance meets on Wednesday night. It's 7 o'clock, right?
It's 7 o'clock, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm that for anybody who wants to attend. Moving on to buildings and grounds.
Something that's not on the agenda for this evening that I wanted to point out, Mr. Basil had asked me to do some research on the flexible four-day work schedule that we, back in my notes, we talked about since 2009. We finally got unstubbered enough to try it this summer, and I'm happy to say that that effort saved the school district $33,600 this summer. So I'd like to thank the cooperation of the support staff. I know that was a little bit of a culture change to do that this summer. Like to thank Mr. Smith for, you know, grasping the idea finally, and I guess to say a little bit of good luck helped. Most of that cost savings was generated through the electricity. $30,000 of that $33,600 was electricity. And we'll have a full report and an itemized report at the facilities committee on October 7th, but I just, I shared it with Mr. Basil today, and he suggested that we get it out to let the public know right now. So congratulations to everyone, the persistence of everyone that said, let's keep moving that initiative forward. That's not a small amount of money. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer any, but that's the news from that end.
I'd just like to say October 7th, at 7, we're going to hold that meeting at APC.
Oh, thank you. Yes.
That's going to be a big discussion before, and obviously look at the agenda items of possible improvement of the administrative office.
Okay. Great. Any other questions or comments from the board on buildings and grounds? Okay. Financial approvals? Do I have a motion to approve the?
Motion for 11A.
We have a motion for 11A and a second. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Who was the second?
Mr. Semenaro was the second. Mr. Shaheen was the first.
Motion for 11A. Motion by Mr. Shaheen, second by Mr. Semenaro. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Tordowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel, yes. And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Moving on to personnel. Number 12.
Motion for 12A through D with the exception of C, 5A, 22, and 23.
C, 5, A.
Mr. Wolf, and his lawyer. Second.
Could you please repeat 12A?
12A through D, with the exception of, A through D isn't David.
Okay.
With the exception of C is Charlie, 5A, 22, and 23.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Motion made by Mr. Shaheen, second by Mr. Semenaro. Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Tordowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Do I have a motion for 12, 5A?
Motion for 5A, C, 5A, 22, and 23. Second.
First and second. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none? You have anything you want to say, Mr. Wolf?
No.
I was just curious. All right.
I like the fact that he is, he is to be supervised in our buildings.
Yeah, I'll explain that in a minute.
Yeah, we'll get into that explanation in a second. So can we get a roll call vote, please, Ms. Hamel?
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Tordowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Upstate.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Just before we move on from this, this series of items, I wanted the public to be aware and the board, if you look, we put in the word supervised and unsupervised. That's just our level of security clearances that are required. What supervised means is that those adults will always be working with a super, with a professional in the district who has a deeper level of clearances. We use the Raptor system for those people to make sure that there are no issues. The unsupervised staff have to have the same level of clearance that the professional staff have, and they may be in situations where they're not always under the direct supervision of another staff member who has those same clearances. So just, when you see that, that's the way we're going to be doing this ongoing. It's consistent with district policy. We just felt it was easier for us and for explanatory purposes to add those words so that everyone would know. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Moving on to 13 programs. Do I have a motion?
8A through G. Second.
Motion for A through G. A second from Mr. Semenaro.
Motion for 13A through G. Motion made by Mr. Shaheen, second by Mr. Semenaro.
Right. Any discussion or questions by board members?
I have a question on that. When, when does this document become public? I've had several, we've talked about it a number of times, and see the number of emails and, and the questions from public wanting to know, A, what was it? And B, who filed? And C, how much did it cost us to have the attorney? This is outside the scope of their normal job. To do this course.
I believe once it's, once the agreement, resolution agreement is approved and by the board and executed by the superintendent, that it would be a public document.
I don't think it's, I don't think there's anything classified in terms of what we spent.
No, that would be.
So I think we spent was $11,000. You could, I can comprehend.
Approximately.
Approximately.
Recently, but I previously reported it.
It's gone up? Since you drew up this document?
Before wear asses.
It didn't go up substantially since then.
So that's in the 11, $12,000 range.
And the bottom line is, they found that there was no basis for the complaint.
Well, basically, they found that the information initially provided by the district in response to the investigation was satisfactory and did not reveal any inequities or sufficient inequities in the district's athletic program vis-à-vis male versus female sports participation or athletic participation, and therefore did not warrant proceeding with the complaint, and that this resolution, which is an informal resolution of the matter whereby the district would just proceed with a self-assessment for this, for the next year. They investigated two years and were satisfied with the information we provided. And based on that, they're allowing us to conduct the self-assessment for the 2012, 2013 school year upon submission of that information, assuming there's no change in our prior performance, the matter would be resolved.
So in a nutshell, for the public, the district spent the better part of almost two years now researching this issue of whether or not there was a Title IX violation, and as you just heard from our solicitor, there was none. So we spent close to $12,000 as part of that investigation. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members on any of these agenda items, A through G?
13D, my son was, had a deposit down for the New Orleans trip concert band, and I think that's been changed. So obviously, I guess we can leave this in here, but they're going to come back with...
They're not going to New Orleans?
I believe they're looking at Virginia Beach or Myrtle Beach due to a airfare conflict.
They would, that's what they gave us for now, so if they're going to change that, there'd be a new motion would be needed just to change that informationally. Well, why don't we prove this in case they do go to New Orleans, and then if they change their plans, they can.
Just amend it.
Send us another request.
That's the best information we have.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Potts. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Can we get a roll call vote, Ms. Hamel?
Motion for 13A through G. Ms., Mr. Tordowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Great. Anything on the policy? Anything on the board on our policy?
We'll start policy committee up next month.
Okay. Transportation? Nothing? Okay. Any old business? Okay. Seeing nothing, any new business? All right. Presentations by the public on issues. Any comments?
I just had a question. The last two meetings, you used to post the agenda on your website by the end of the week prior to the meeting. Now all of a sudden, it's not coming out Monday afternoon. Is there a reason?
There may have been a reason in the sense that we may not have gotten to it, I may not have gotten to approving that agenda until the weekend.
The reason I ask is, is the attendance as far as you did, the rest of the new rules being discussed, like the hour, but they don't say it in the morning. There's less of a set for the ten minutes.
We will obviously do our best to make sure we get the agenda out ahead of time, but, you know, we do the best we can.
Thank you.
Do you see, 7120, you guys? This needs to inform all here and then how I feel, and I can, the students and the parents feel, I know we all, and teachers that have been devoted to it on Friday, and someone called out, you feel like you're considering the class special, 30 minutes, that's 14 to 15 minutes a day. Mrs. Hamel? Mr. Wolf? And Mr. Semenaro? I know you're here, and you're all great kids, and we're glad you're special. Mr. Semenaro, you're a lucky volunteer to hand out artwork for the garden, for the park, for the, we appreciate it and love you, sweetie. Mrs. Hamel, Mr. Wolf? I am a regular student who's receiving the national presidential fitness awards. It's only 30 minutes of phys ed tests, it's not a time limit on my, that I've always been given support. Some first and secondary are trying, it's not, they're not, they're not hard, they're not getting enough time to get the project finished. There's no support this year, our schedule is part-time, it's not a last work. You realize, all specials include an hour of curriculum every month. This really affects our ability to fully teach our curriculum. I just cannot believe you cut page well, that is so likely. Do I give you that on the children's kids and the public school? You know, I, I, that's really, what do you, I didn't send your children who were affected by these cuts. If your children were affected by these cuts, I personally think you would have thirty five, specials, forty-five minutes, I wouldn't have seen a problem with it. Please don't get me wrong, I am letting middle school teen teachers, of teachers who got voted back in, and maybe that affects maybe about 300 or 50 kids, and I'm letting go of basic skill development, and that affects maybe 400 or 500 kids. However, again, you realize how many kids are affected by specials being cut back over 40, 50 kids? You are ignoring the youngest, the littlest, and the immediate kid, and by all the exposure they might get in, our music is at library and computer. Shame on you not to honor, for not supporting the elementary teachers and students, and for not promoting the work of all that you do, for our kids. Shame on you school administrators for not coming to our elementary school and see what we all do. I am sure, I assure you, and I will assure you, you will differently about these special 30 minutes, and I'm sure you do something about it, it's the kids that suffer. If you would like to see all the things that we do, there's a list of the great, I'm sure there are candidates in management of all things that the special teachers do, please feel free to, if you ever have to say it. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. No. But I think it's important you understand that this board weighs every single decision very carefully, and we make tough decisions, and we don't ignore the needs of our students. We wrestle with these decisions every single day, and we live with the consequences of those decisions every single day. And I think it's a little cavalier to make the assumption that this board does so recklessly or without consideration.
Well, I agree with it, it was without consideration. I was here at the meeting when you wrote it.
Were you at the deliberations behind the scenes? Were you at every single budget meeting that we attended? Are you at the committee meetings where these issues are discussed?
No.
Okay. So what you don't know is how much time and effort and thought goes into these decisions by each individual board member here. And I think the board has demonstrated with, by spending our time volunteering for these positions, or whether it's volunteering our time in the schools or in other capacities in this community, that we do care about these kids, and we do try to figure out ways to keep the programs that we have in place to the best of our abilities. And some places, we will have to make some choices, and they're not desirable choices. But at the end of the day, we're making the choices that we think best suit the needs of this community as a whole.
And I appreciate the thought that you put into it. I just don't really fully think that not that you have elementary kids, I don't think you really feel great consciousness of that. Some of you have middle school children, and that was wrong. I also say this, I just knew it was like a day, I feel better now.
Well, we appreciate your opinion. I don't want you to think it's...
I'm Amy Denver, bringing up the director of the council. I'm the president of the current teacher council this year, and we'd like to bring to the board that the current teacher council, again, because we support the teachers in the community that support our funders, we'd be willing to be able to borrow field check money.
Oh, thank you.
We will also be providing a bribe program this year of the day, for the second of the graders, and we'll be providing good grade recognition, paying for teachers, just anything like that. We will also be providing, we will spend all the teachers and parents that are here without support, we would not be able to allow that to happen this year.
Thank you. We really appreciate your help. I'm going to make a copy. Maybe I shouldn't.
Shane Popovich, 39 years old. I agree with what the superintendent was saying. You pull a surplus, and as you trigger, bring back the minus, if you cut every year, keep paying and paying and paying away from students. And then again, when the budget comes in, aggregate your surplus. And if you truly care, then there should be an automatic response when there is a surplus, especially a $700,000 surplus. And, and how much can you save by committing this to specials? Is it $250,000?
$465,000.
Or, I think I've just been told $465,000?
$465,000. You could automatically run it back and still pull the surplus. But now they're not.
Well, remember Shane.
And also, if you guys are considering block scheduling, that you can bring that amount of time to the special areas because they are needed, they are important to the overall education of the students. But, you know, I said this before, I don't, I don't understand where so far that, and then when it comes closer to the budget, we're not that, and all the tests that you have to handle, and then it's so far, so you can have your control. So I think there needs to be a little bit more, I don't know, of a change.
Shane, can I suggest that you attend the finance committee meetings again? Because a lot of this is discussed at the finance committee meetings. So, you know, we just, at the last finance committee meeting, did an autopsy of our budget and the variance and where the $700,000 surplus came from. A lot of it had to do with supplies. I think it was almost $300,000 or $400,000 of that number came from supplies. And a lot of that had to, and the reason why the supplies, we didn't expend them as much is because we locked down our budget in the beginning of the year. Now, I don't know how you expect the district to say definitively in September or August exactly how much money they're spending in supplies from, from there until the following June, you know? And last year, it wasn't supplies, it was something else. So if you've been to the meetings and you've seen what we do at the, at the finance committee meetings, and then again at the budget level meetings, is this board takes a lot of time considering the information that's being presented to us, and we have to make certain assumptions as to, as to whether that, how accurate that information is and how well we can forecast what we're going to spend going forward. we can forecast what we're gonna spend going forward. And it's our goal, you heard the board, last June, bring program back and allocate additional money out of fund balance for this particular year, almost two point three million dollars, I believe, and we hope we spend that money down. That's our goal, is to spend that money down instead of cutting another program.
Right. All I'm saying is that over the summer, you have to stay in money service company, and you have a better career than most of the world. There should be, there should be a backlash.
Well, you understand that we're projecting deficits every year going forward.
Yeah.
Okay, so just so we understand that, well, in five years, we've had deficits going forward if we had done nothing, right? And so as a board, when we make decisions to blunt those deficits and deliver a balanced budget year in and year out, and that means cuts, it means alternative revenue, it's meant tax increases, it's meant a variety of different things to get us to the finish line every June with a balanced budget. And then the following year, the budget's not a hundred percent accurate, it's never gonna be a hundred percent accurate, there's gonna be a variance. And the variance has been, you know, one percent, two percent on a budget of fifty-two million dollars? You know, I agree with you, seven hundred thousand dollars is a huge surplus, and quite frankly, I would have rather seen we've thrown a deficit. It makes our job in many ways a little bit easier. But I would have to say that we're doing the best we can with the information that we have, and for, I think the premise that you're suggesting, that we automatically bring program back when we're looking at a deficit for next year already of over three million dollars, is a little premature. We'd rather keep that seven hundred thousand dollars so that you have that money, as we discussed at the last meeting that we had, in place so that we can keep the other things like half-day kindergarten and/or the extracurricular programs, which the public has told us loud and clear that they continue to want us to support, instead of putting those things right back up on the line items for budget cuts in fourteen, fifteen?
Right, but again, we need your counsel to tell our students, so if--
No doubt.
--if you go back, if you're going for it back this year, it's one way or another to get, and the next year, if you don't get it, you probably have to, but it's just that you have to look and choose, and it shows, not so.
Appreciate your opinion.
Mary, come from Union Avenue, Houston. We haven't hired a business manager.
No, we've been interviewing business managers.
Sure, we're very interested in that. Let's take this role off to decrease salaries, those two lost salaries, not like we did the last time, I said, I think if you came in at the same salary as a former super ten that's not more, that's video. Now's the time to cut it further. And the people, the, but doesn't mind, I'll say, it depends, you go by people. And yeah, we wanted the best money, it's all, it's all like, you're qualified, but there's a lot of qualified out there, it's all on work, so let's, let's just go off and do the, to, to our salaries.
Hey, thank you for your comments.
Jennifer, I'm here to assist the whole of Birdsborough. It's not very much that I could really react to what you're saying, you are excited, but we've been outside, you know, like we used to work, or I'm not, but it's, it turns that into this environment, but I've worked with everybody every day. Of course, I'd like to thank Mr. Sheehan for helping charge and service there, or who they, they even have a scene us and share their private experience, and your children have, and I have great odds for that, all great experiences, so I've been there as a parent. I'm a teacher on a daily basis, though, I hear things, that's gonna be tough, but we can do it. We're sure getting the goals we go, but we'll get it done for the kids, letting the kids down is never an option. These are things I would like to say, if you're a board, one of the best working individuals is to say, sometimes you don't realize what you don't mean until you don't have it. And I took it in for the succinctly thing, so I thought, kids, you don't get to, you don't play that game with them. We have to do the best we can the first time around. Also, testing services, we have, we've reported to Deb Constance ever, and inspirational speaker. And our diversity and identity, we said, we shared over with us Karen Ossman, who is a hip hop too. The more I know about him, the less likely I am to ever think of her. I think now we prepare for this year, it's really clever for the ones to get to know the students and the teachers. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion adjourned. Thank you for coming.